Well, the feed I'm getting from everybody else is so slow right now. I'm wondering if the recording's gonna be better, but we are recording. Kaden is about to join us and the mayor has joined us, so yeah, we all said it.
I think everybody's here. Hallelujah. Good morning. We'll just call the meeting to order. This is awesome. Good morning, everybody. We're called to order and the first thing we'll do is roll call. I'll read your names. Please signify by saying aye if you are present. Moses Malazo.
Aye.
Mayor Becky Daggett.
Here.
Thank you, Becky. Ashley Page.
Here.
Erin Moore.
Here.
Nadine Hart.
Here.
Tatum Covey.
Here.
And city staff, we have Anna.
I don't think Anna's joining us. I think I just see Sharice Kurt and myself. Oh, yeah, she's here. Sorry.
Anna? Yeah, she's here. Yeah. Caleb, Sharice, and Kurt isn't here? Isn't Kurt presenting?
Kurt is here.
Okay, Kurt is here. Okay.
I'm here. I've just been quiet.
Okay, that's excellent, Kurt. Is Sarah, Sarah Dar? Yep?
Sarah is not here today. She has been conflicting meetings.
Okay, got it. And Tracy French. No Tracy either, right? Okay.
Not everybody.
Okay, good. So we'll open the meeting for public comment at this time. We have no members of the public present or online. Do I need to read the paragraph if we don't have anybody? Okay. At this time, any member of the public may address the board on any subject within the board's jurisdiction that is not on this meeting's agenda. Excuse me. The Arizona Open Meeting Law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on an item that is not listed on the prepared agenda. Commissioners may, however, respond to criticism made by those addressing the board, ask the staff to review a matter, or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. To address the board on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for the chair to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Okay. We now will go into the approval of meeting minutes, and we actually are going to approve two sets today. We'll start with the meeting minutes from January 18th. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
This is Erin. I motion to approve.
And I second.
Thank you, Moses. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the January 18th, 2024 minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The next set of meeting minutes are from the February 28th, 2024 meeting. And I would now.
If I can explain this one moment.
Sure.
So yeah, I spoke with the clerk's office about meetings where we didn't have form. Thank you all for your responsive D last month. But since we didn't have form, we did cancel and I did. This reflects how it should have been handled. Since there was no discussion, we skipped some of those formalities and we apologize for that.
So we don't have to approve, we don't have minutes then, right?
These minutes should still be approved, but we did not go through the formality at the time because we just did not call the meeting to order.
Oh, got it. Okay.
This is a clarification on my end that I should have been able to tackle. But this is accurate to having an asset form.
Okay. Okay. Then we would, I need a motion to approve the February 28th minutes, please.
This is Erin. A motion to approve.
Thank you, Erin. I'm sorry, who was that?
Ashley.
Oh, Ashley, thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the information from the February 28th, 2024 meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, we're going to move on to action items and we have several of them today. And Kurt, that puts you up.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you. I don't have, which one am I starting with, Caleb?
Um, it says on the agenda that it's Resolution 24-02.
So that's our ACOP.
Okay. I'll share from my screen if that's okay.
That's just fine. I was, like I said, my interface is a little slow. So just give me a moment. Oh, you still got on. Excellent. That works.
Yeah, I'm gonna get used to this sooner or later. So a lot of this is prompted under the Housing Opportunities Through Modernization Act, which was passed in 2016. HUD promptly gave us guidance in 2023 and wanted us to implement almost immediately. But this is kind of a weird thing. Right now, we don't have an effective date because the HUD computer system cannot support a lot of what's on here. So that's, that's why, under the executive summary, some of it says effective immediately, some of it says effective TBD. We were given several choices of directions to go. This is especially, the big deals here is the first one, which is totally new. There will be $100,000 resource limit placed, which means anyone who has assets of over $100,000, regardless of how low their income is, will no longer qualify. How we handle this is optional. We are proposing to.
Kurt, excuse me, can you show a little bit more on your screen, please? Becky's requested that we see a little bit more.
Let me see. Are you seeing the executive summary?
Yes.
Okay. Let me move down here. This is, this is a little lengthy, unfortunately. I don't think I can get it all on the screen. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm trying to split the screens.
It's okay.
Better?
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, under the asset limit, and most of this is going to apply to both the ACOP and the admin plan, so we don't have to go through this twice. We are proposing for, now if someone has over $100,000 in intake, they'll be deemed ineligible. Period, end of story. For existing residents, we're given the option to give them a six-month period to cure, meaning they would have six months to spend down so that they would not lose their housing. The other option, which is not what we're recommending, is that anyone who has resources over $100,000 is given a 30-day notice and asked to move out. So that's, that's one of our optional things. The next one is not optional. We only have to collect an ROI or authorization to release information once during tenancy now. That is the HUD required form. We don't think information sources are going to honor a seven-year-old ROI, so we will probably develop an internal form to be signed annually. Suitability. These changes will be effective immediately upon passage, and they're not really related to HOTMA. They're related to other things. Basically, we're removing all references to criminal activity, except as specifically required to HUD. However, we will still be focusing on those behaviors that will be detrimental to the life of others in the development. I made a few corrections there, and basically, what that does, for a long time under the one-strike law passed in 1996, any kind of violation was an immediate termination. Now, we're changing that so that we're meeting with families and applicants before we make a determination, so we're getting both sides of the story. That way, we're not disqualifying people that, yeah, made a mistake, but they fixed it. The next one is admission preferences. This is public housing only. Public housing does have an income limit of 140% AMI. So up until HOTMA, you could live in public housing forever as long as you obeyed your lease. Now, if you go over that income limit, you're subs, you're no longer considered a public housing resident and you're paying 120% of the fair market rent rather than an income-based or flat rent. What we are proposing is to add a new admission preference. Basically, what it is, is for those, those residents that go over income, but then their income goes down and they need the assistance again. By adding this new preference, we would be able to reinstate their status as a public housing resident so they could go back to income-based rent. And I'm going fast. If you have questions, please stop me. They are changing, they are allowing us, HUD is allowing us to change methodologies.
I have a question.
Yes.
About the criminal activity. You just said that people make mistakes and that should not inhibit them from housing. Well, I'm just kind of curious, like what type of mistakes are we talking about? Are we talking about soliciting a prostitute? Are we talking about like a DUI? Are we talking about dealing drugs? Because I'm just, for all the need for housing, I'm just wondering why, like with JoJo's House and, and some of these other short-term things, why people with no criminal history is not being considered over somebody? Like what kind of, what are we talking about? And how do you know that it's not going to keep occurring?
Well, of course, I don't have my magic crystal ball, so I can't say it's never going to occur. But basically, the types of activity that we're looking at is violent, drug-related, property damage, or disturbance-related stuff.
I think we lost a little bit there. If you could repeat that?
Sure. Sorry about that. So the types of activities that we look at is anything violent or threats of violence, disturbance-related, drug-related, sexual offenses. So we're looking at, will the people be a detriment to the neighborhood? So spitting on the sidewalk, we don't care. I mean, it's kind of gross, I guess, but it's not, doesn't make you a bad resident. If you run around assaulting people, then you're a danger to our other residents and we need to address that. Now, what, what we have to look at is the circumstances surrounding the activity and what has happened since. And this is basically protected under the disparate impact ruling for fair housing. So that's, and what we're doing is we're, we're talking to folks and we're doing this with credit, too. Okay, you didn't pay your rent. You were evicted. What happened? Okay, this happened. What have you done since? So we're trying not to disqualify people that, of course, corrected. And we really are not able to prioritize people based on rankings in suitability. It's date and time of application and whether or not people qualify. Does that sort of answer the question?
So you're saying that if you have a sex offense, but you've gone to your classes, or you have habitual alcohol or substance abuse, but you've gone to classes, you are not disqualified? Violence, you've gone to classes, you're not disqualified, right? So if you have paperwork showing that you went to your classes, you still qualify for housing? Is that what you're saying?
99%.
Yes.
99%, yes. The, the exception to that is sex offenders under a lifetime registry requirement are banned for life under federal law.
Okay, so if you've gone to jail for a drug or alcohol problem and you're released, you still have access to housing, correct? Over, you're not, I'm just, I'm trying to understand. Like, so if you're on the list, you're in jail, okay? Supposedly, you go through these programs. And you're ahead of a list, then maybe somebody like, I mean, Ashley works with JoJo's House and these families, so someone with no alcohol or any of these things, because they're lower on the list, it does not get any preference? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct. That would be strictly illegal.
Okay.
Can I interject just a moment? Kurt, I'm having a lot of trouble hearing you part of the time. I, is anybody else having that issue?
He did turn off briefly, but I know that if we turn off video, that can assist with that. Uh, there was issue.
Okay. I'm going to turn my video.
We're gonna, yeah, hopefully we get the best audio possible. Let's go do that. We're gonna mute our edit as well.
Okay.
Okay, am I better now?
Yeah, you are actually. So thank you for that help, Caleb.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, keep on going, Kurt.
Back, back to the question, we cannot prioritize based on level of suitability. That, that would be a fair housing violation. So does that answer the suitability question?
So yeah, I just, so I know that you guys have federal requirements and I just wanted to know what kind of wiggle room the housing authority has on their end to vet these individuals versus, for housing versus someone with no criminal record, no offenses, no jail time? And what wiggle room you guys have, if not?
We have none. If, if we tried to install a preference for people with no criminal history, HUD would not approve of that. So that, that one is one.
Sorry to put, to clarify, HUD will not approve of such restrictions. People haven't been cut out, sorry.
So essentially, it's not legal for a housing authority to discriminate against people simply because of their criminal history, except for specific things that are identified by federal law.
Thank you, Moses. I'm just curious, though. Since you cannot discriminate and you may house one or more or multiple individuals with these backgrounds in criminal history, how is the housing authority ensuring that the people around them are safe? Are you looking at, are you guys checking in? Because I mean, if somebody has a history of drug usage, there's no assumption that just goes away. How are you ensuring that they're following these guidelines?
We have lease enforcement in place. I mean, we're not in a position to live these folks' lives for them. So we, we do our best to screen and, you know, we, we counsel them prior to move in. That's why we have that initial meeting, because you could still be declined for not meeting suitability. But it's, it's a more encompassing procedure now than it used to be. So if you come in to the meeting and you've done nothing but say, oh, I'm a changed person. That was three weeks ago. I've grown. The answer is still going to be, no, we're not going to admit you based on this disqualifying activity. But if it was, you know, time in the past and appropriate steps have been taken with no further slips, you're, you're eligible to be housed.
So they have to show, they have, they have to demonstrate that they've gone through treatment or that they're, I don't know, attending AA or something like that? They can't just say, you know, I went through the Exodus program at the county jail. I'm good? You guys are, you guys are, this is part of your vetting, is to make sure that they're like, following through?
Correct.
I also see that Kaden had a comment.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to also kind of talk about housing first as a model as well. And that's like a concept that's known as best practice. And essentially, what that means is that even if someone has a substance use background or maybe has criminal charges, that that doesn't mean that they don't deserve housing. And so it's like a, a fine balance that all housing providers have to navigate that falls under, really, that housing first model is that we give people the opportunity to have housing and as long as people are following the lease, that doesn't mean that, yeah, they're still following the lease. And so that's what's really important. And as long as they don't have those disqualifying factors, that they still deserve that chance.
Moses, did you have a question?
Yeah, first I want to apologize for just jumping in without typing into the chat. And second, I agree with Tatum. The housing first model has been incredibly successful and has, in various scientific studies of, of, of ways of improving people's lives. Housing first has been demonstrated to be one of the most effective ways of helping people reduce criminal behaviors, whether it's drug use or violent behaviors or whatever. So I think that we want to be sure that we are providing housing for as many people as possible. And I know that we don't have enough affordable housing, obviously, in Flagstaff. But picking winners and losers is fraught with all sorts of issues and I think we should be sure that we're not inadvertently doing that through implementing any kind of suitability criteria that one might run up against federal legal issues and two might be applying certain kinds of decision-making that we need to be really careful not to misapply in various instances.
Any other questions or comments? Looks like you can continue, Kurt.
Okay, thank you. Great discussion. Moving on, annualizing and verifying income. This is going to be, we have the opportunity to change our verification methods. We believe this will be very beneficial to our residents because it will be less work for them providing documentation. It'll be less work for our staff interpreting documentation and there will be less chance of misreporting that can result in retroactive rent or paybacks. Safe Harbor is a new method they're allowing us to use whereby we would take the income determination of another means-tested program and just use that income determination so that our residents don't have to supply us anything in that fashion. For us, that works really well because we have read-only access to the DES computers and we can get the DES income determinations. So that, that will save our residents a lot of work. It will save us a lot of work and it will be so much easier for our residents to understand, we believe. Next is hardship exemptions.
Yeah, I'm confused. Okay. I don't understand. Okay, so Safe Harbor. So as a voucher holder, I, I work and then I don't work depending on the year. We have spring break. You know, this week I haven't worked at all. So Safe Harbor, which is automatically put into the system when I have made gross and you guys just check in and adjust my rent month to month? Like, how does that, that works if somebody has, if it has, if they have a specific hourly job that they do, but if you work intermittent and I know some people work temporary? How does that work for someone like me so that I'm not making, maybe I gross $2,000 and then the next month at $600? How am I not being assured I'm not paying the following month when I made it $2,000? Is that what Safe Harbor does?
No. In a situation where we have different sources of income, say that it's sporadic or seasonal, then we would just take annual figures and use those rather than using Safe Harbor. So Safe Harbor is not going to work for everybody. But yeah, so that, that is another thing that is in there is we are allowed to use the past 12 months' income with any adjustments and that becomes the annual income for the next year so that there won't be ups and downs, but it should be affordable.
I don't understand. So Kurt, are you saying that you would, this is Ashley. Are you saying you would annualize the rent if someone had sporadic income varying month to month and that monthly rent would be determined based off that annualized income? I'm a little bit confused as well.
That, no, the way you said it is exactly correct. It would, looking back over the last year, unless there's been some sort of permanent change, that would become the new annual income and rent would be based upon that.
Okay, so then someone who has varying, varying income monthly would look at the previous 12 months and then determine rent for, say, the next 12 months based off of that? Okay, I understand.
If I could add, if there were a change in the household, this is maybe self-employment income and you go from self-employment to a wage position and you stopped being self-employed, that's a change that would, that might, or really, if you became disabled and no longer were able to work, those are situations that you could report and then make that change with your specialist. That's normal. That's typical ahead of the day.
Doesn't make sense. I'm, I'm confused. So let's say like, okay, so I, I work for FUSD and this is not about me, but I'm just thinking like, this is a drastic change where they're switching the schedules for students, so I may not be able to work at high school. So if you took my participation this year at the high school level and then next year you use that, my rent would be a lot higher even though I'm working less. It seems like in this economy and stuff, with a lot of different fields, it would be difficult to guess. But if you took what I made last year, I'm paying a lot more rent this year based on that. So it does, I, I just, I'm confused how new, new income would only apply to. I'm just confused.
Okay, so permanent changes are taken into account. That would be part of the interview process at annual recertification. So at, at that point, yes, you would be asked to show, okay, there's been a change in circumstance. What is the new income? So yes, we're not, if, if there's been a drastic change, then that'll be taken into account.
Nadine, did that clarify for you?
No, it did not. Kurt, this is Ashley. I have a follow-up question. So when you guys do the annual certifications, is that just like annually, they can't, any voucher holder cannot come back and say, hey, my income has decreased significantly? Or is that an option? Because I know when income does increase significantly, you guys must be made aware of that.
That's under a different part, but. That's under a different part, but. Interim recertifications. Will still take place for permanent reductions in income.
So you're saying that if, if I, my annual cer- recertification. And this could hap- this happens to a lot of people. It's not just me. Then if I, it falls on a certain month. Where it looks like I made more and then summer hits and there's no work because schools are closed. And if you're an auxiliary teacher. There's no work until probably September. For those months where I'm not working, my rent would, could still be as high as nine to a thousand dollars a month. Because annually I hit higher at that point. I mean, I'm confused, so.
So that's, that's already taken into account, people that work. Positions where they maybe worked 40 week work years. The annualized income is based on 40 weeks. So it's already taken into account those break periods.
But even you can't, you can't foresee, you can't base somebody's rent on what they did last month though. If it's a job to job sort of thing, being a, you know, sometimes it's. For, you work as you have work. So if one year you happen to be able to work more days and the next year you're working 40% of what you worked. You still have to come up with the rent from the prior year on top. Of the newly lowered allowances for gas and all utilities. Where does that money come from at that point? I, I just get confused because in this program. Your income is looked at. But if your gas bills higher because of the wonky weird years, where do you get money to pay for things? If your, if your income is based on a prosperous year.
Okay, again.
Please allow awkward response, thank you. Go ahead, Kurt, sorry.
Again, we would look at changes. So. The scenario you described, you're in one school this year. Next year you go to another school and your pay has decreased, your hours are decreased or whatever. You would be asked for verification of that. And then it would be based upon the new income. So as I said, it, this is not, Safe Harbor is not going to work for everybody. It'll, it'll be really helpful for those that do. It's just, this is not the end all to be it all. It's just another tool in our toolbox. That we didn't have before.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And anything else on that?
No, no, I just, uh, asking questions, like I said, you guys all work in housing. You're familiar with these terms. I'm the actual voucher holder and if I have these questions, I know other people do too. A lot of this is very confusing from where I'm sitting. Which is why I'm kind of moving slower and holding up the, this, this meeting, but, um. Yeah, like you guys do this every day. And so I'm not asking any. Questions that somebody else who holds vouchers wouldn't ask. Cause it is confusing. There's, it is. I just understand.
And Nadine and the board widely, Kurt and I attended a three day training trying to make sense of all these changes. So you, by no means are you alone in seeing, hey, what's this? Can you explain this term? That's, we're trying to consolidate into 45 minutes, these changes for our, as well. So, uh, it's, it's very understandable. There's confusion or there's questions. Thank you.
Absolutely. And this will help us prepare to answer everyone's questions because. They do pay us to know these things and. They can get really complicated and confusing. So thank you for the questions.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, moving on hardship exemptions. So. Um, part of, part of the determination of rent is to. Give certain deductions for households that qualify. The first one is childcare that allows the household to work, go to school or seek work. And that is the only time childcare is allowed currently. In the future, a family could request a hardship exemption to get a childcare deduction when they're paying. Even if they do not meet those qualifiers. Um, an example of that would be if I have to quit my job to care for my elderly mother. And I'm leaving my children in childcare so that those slots are open when I'm no longer needed to do that. And I don't want. My, my children exposed to, you know, a sick room environment. I could ask for a hardship exemption and continue to get the deduction for childcare. Then the next hardship exemption would be for the medical cost floor. Right now. Households that have a head of household, co-head or spouse that is 62 or over or disabled. Can receive a deduction of medical expenses that exceed 3% of their income. That floor has been increased to 10%. With HUTMA. That is not optional. Now, because this can be very drastic for some of these households and we don't want them. To have to decide between medicine and rent. It's going to be phased in. So the first year it'll go to 5%. That floor. And then it will just keep ratcheting up until it hits the 10. After it hits the 10. The household can still request a hardship exemption to go back to. Okay, the number's not in front of me, but I think it's seven and a half percent. So in other words, they will get a greater deduction making their rent lower. And then we've got a proposed definition for hardship. That one is, is confusing. Any questions?
Moses?
Yeah, um. I am a little bit confused here. Well, maybe more than a little bit confused on both of the hardship exemptions you just talked about. Um, the, the, the part that you have highlighted in yellow, I don't know if it's on. The part that's being projected, but in the original document we received, um, the. There are a couple of parts that were highlighted in yellow that say when the rent and childcare expenses. Exceeds 45% of the annual income, the family will be determined unable to pay rent. Does that mean that they will not be eligible to stay? Or does that mean they will receive additional?
That, that is when. That is when they would receive the hardship exemption. So if, if my unreimbursed expenses and rent is over 45% of my income. Then the hardship exemption would be granted to allow that additional, um, deduction.
Okay, thanks. Kurt, when you turn to look at your papers, I think that your mic, you, you're moving away from your mic. So it becomes really hard to hear.
About that.
No worries. So, so the, the 45% threshold here is essentially when the hardship exemption. Applies and people receive additional support to pay their rent essentially.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on that? All right. Verification.
Oh.
One question. Yeah, sorry. Nadine again. Okay, you say unable to pay rent. It was my understanding that you have a bare minimum of what, $325? That you have to pay your landlord for rent? So if you're unable to pay rent because of these financial hardships, does that mean you owe zero money until the situation approves? Cause if you have no money to pay your rent for 320. Wh- where are you supposed to get it? Cause you see all the financials. I'm confused.
Okay, what I think you might be alluding to. Is a housing choice voucher holder that is rented at above the payment standard. When you rent above the payment standard, you are not covered. Or anything over to pay now. Uh, you could, you could receive assistance up to the payment standard. But when a housing choice voucher household chooses to rent a home that's over the payment standard. Um, that, that additional money is, is there. And that will never be subsidized.
Okay, I, I don't know. I, I was kind of, how many? I don't think it's, how many, uh, voucher holders right now due to the current. Rent inflations are renting over the housing standard. Do you have a ballpark figure? Is it like? 80% are kind of forced into the situation?
I believe it's more like 10.
Only 10? Okay.
Yeah, most, most of our. Households are able to find something within the payment standard. And I agree, the rents here are way too high, so.
Yeah.
But yes, this is always a caution. And households are made aware when they rent over the. Payment standard that no matter what happens, that additional amount you're required to pay to the landlord.
Sharice, did you have a question?
I, I just wanted to interject and say that it's way less than 10% because we highly encourage. Our participants to not rent over the payment standard just for that reason, because there is that rent burden that is incurred by. Applicants or participants that. In situations like this, it's unfortunate that we would not be able to help subsidize that overage. And so I, uh, about less, way less than 10%. If anything, I would say a good 5% maybe. And again, it's a choice. So it's kind of hard to like. Have people understand that, yes, you have to find appropriate housing in order to do that. If you have to dive into that extra 10% of your income. There, you know, it's a rent burden and it's hard to be able to assist, um, and encourage. You know, to not use that, especially when our housing market is not very good.
Thank you for additional clarification, Moses.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so. Part of the crush, part of my question is following on from, I think, what Nadine was asking, which is, um. Does this determination keep up with the yearly increases in rent that we see? Or is it two years behind? Like the area median income and other calculations that HUD does?
Yeah, I, I would say that it's. A little behind, yes. But we have no. Our, our section eight staff has gone above and beyond to make sure that we are giving the highest payment standard possible. But it's still based on the fair market rents set by HUD.
Okay. All right. So it, it, it's still going to be somewhat behind the reality of the cost of rent. And, you know, if we ever actually had good years, that would be fine because it would allow people to save a little bit more. But. You know, the past two decades, we haven't had very many of those. And so, um, the, the fair market value. The real market value goes up faster than the HUD defined fair market value. Uh, so people are typically going to be a little bit behind for a while.
I would tend to agree with that, especially because our market is escalating rapidly right now. As are most housing markets.
Okay, but there's not a lot that the housing authority can do to adjust for that at the rate that the market value is adjusting.
That's, that's correct. Other than doing a study, which we did years ago to no avail. Uh, it was expensive and they didn't pay attention to it.
Okay, so Housing Solutions does a study every year of the fair, of the real market values of rent. Versus how much people can afford to pay in rent and stuff like that. But I doubt that HUD is going to pay any attention to that. Um, on a yearly basis instead of a several year lag.
And that was actually submitted one year in an attempt to get our fair market rents up.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. And, and. Just to make it known, we do have HUD exception rents. They, we've already gone to HUD to get the highest exception rents possible. For our market. So trust me when I say our section eight staff is amazing and they're doing everything that they can.
Oh, I believe it. I, I just wanted to get my questions on the record, just in case we can have this conversation again in a time that might actually. Impact HUD policy.
Oh, good luck with that. If, if you find that magic pill, will you let me know? Okay, moving on to verification procedures.
Um, Kurt, there's a question in the chat.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, hey Kurt, uh, so, uh, Nadine here again. Um, one, just listening to what Moses said. Um, and then my own experience and that of others, uh, with this housing choice voucher looking for housing. Um, when, when we call people, they don't know what the program is. They say they go to the website. It's, it's very confusing. It's not. Sharice did. An amazing job working with my landlords, highlighting it. He was like, this was so easy. Um, so what are you guys doing? Besides having the community come to you to seek information versus going out to the community and explaining what the benefits would be to maybe renting? If it's a lot of like $500 below what they're asking to be fair market rate and to work with the housing authority? Because not just me, but other voucher holders have been looking for housing. Say that people don't know what the program is. Are you guys doing anything to educate? Private property management companies or owners? I don't see anything on social media to make this, to help them understand. And I just went to city council. And one guy said, yeah, I, I rent below to try to do my part with all the, uh, house vacancies for Airbnb's and short term rentals. And I just, I was just wondering why, what you guys are doing besides people come to you. Are you guys actually going out?
So Nadine, I think that's a really good question for the board to be asking. Unfortunately, as far as open meeting law, that's not on, that's on the agenda item today.
Oh, okay.
So we won't, we have to focus on the agenda items we do have.
Okay.
So if that's, if you'd like to learn about the outreach methods, uh, that we have. Uh, or have a broader discussion with the board about strategies that could be undertaken, we can add that to a future agenda item.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
This is Moses. I would second that if you need a second to add it to.
Definitely on a motion, you can talk about business, but it's clear that our board is interested in that. So we'll, uh, I will add that to a future agenda item. Sharice and I can work on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say Sharice will be your choice for that one. So I'm totally in favor of it. You're welcome, Sharice. Moving on, this, these are the things that we think our residents and participants are going to find really beneficial, helpful and streamlined. The first one is verification. Right now for assets, things like checking accounts that we wind up using an average balance of $9. All, all different methods of assets, people are providing us all kinds of paperwork. Under the new system, we will be allowed to take a self-certification that the assets are under $50,000. So. Folks that have an average number of assets that are under $50,000 can just self-certify. They will not have to provide bank statements, paperwork, life insurance policies. Things of that nature. We think our residents and our staff both are going to find that. To be a very streamlined thing that will cut down on the time needed to certify. And, and the paperwork needed. However, the board can say that they're not in favor of that and they want us to continue to require the use of third party documentation. Now, if total assets are over $50,000. The verification methods remain in place that we have now. Questions?
Moses? Yeah, um, is that 50,000 something that's set by HUD or is that something you have some flexibility in determining?
That's set by HUD.
Okay.
I could go below, we, we can go below that if we want to, but.
Oh, good Lord, no, please no.
Alright, change, change report. Um, all changes will continue to need to be reported in writing within ten days of the change. However. Increases to earned income between certifications. We are now allowed to let it ride until the next recertification. So if I get a dollar an hour raise. I can just bank that money, catch up with bills or whatever until my next annual recertification if we choose this option. That will do away with a lot of the retroactive rent issues we've seen where. We feel no one did anything intentionally, however, they did fail to report. In those circumstances, we're required to collect. We will not have to do that anymore. So this will put a majority of our applicant, uh, our residents and participants seeing us only once a year. And much as everyone loves to come in and say hi to us, I think they'll probably appreciate this. We do have the option, if there's an increase in earned income, to process an interim recertification if the increase is more than ten percent. So that option is also there. And we also have the option not to process an increase if it occurs within three months of the annual recertification date. Questions about that? Okay, decreases to adjusted income. It is always. Yes.
Hey Kurt, it's Ashley. I really like the proposed process that makes a, a recertification. I like that was a lot of important.
I think several staff also like that.
The tenant and like employees, so I didn't have to be bad.
I, I just think this is really gonna help our residents out. It will help stabilize their rents some. It will negate a lot of negative things that have been going on that really I never felt. Residents were doing on purpose for the most part. If they do it on purpose, that's different, but. Uh, our, our change, the, the change reporting process can be confusing and we're really trying to simplify it. And I, I really like that they're giving us the option to make the program more user-friendly.
Caleb, did you have a comment?
Sorry, I was motioning for, for Ash. It looks like uh Moses is following up.
Okay, Moses.
Uh, my question is related to the decreases in it to adjusted income. Um, is this something that you will be sending out a reminder to, you know, hey? Dear resident, did you have a decrease in your uh adjusted income? And if so, do you want to? Um, fill in this certification and uh, or is this just something that people have to know about and will? Apply for whenever they remember to do so.
Moses, the, the proposal is to keep it as is. We currently do. Um, downward adjustments for any decrease in income.
So anytime somebody has a decrease, they are allowed to come in and say, I've had a decrease and I'd like to, to, to make this adjustment?
Correct.
And is that, it, do they receive reminders in whatever kind of way that this is an option available to them?
I, usually when we're talking to them in person, but no, we don't send out regular reminders on that.
Okay.
But we do our best, and I know that the section eight program has a, a change reporting. Um, policy form, cliff notes, if you will. That they have people sign and they receive a copy of every time they do an annual recertification to help remind them. If, if your income goes down. So during the, during the interview process, we do our very best to make sure. Folks understand how we determine their income and what their options and responsibilities are.
Right, okay. I just, in my mind, I'm thinking it'd be great for people to receive a regular reminder that if their income decreases. They can, they can file this, but not a regular reminder that are, if their income changes, right? Cause if the income changes and increases, we kind of don't want them to be filing this until the, the yearly review.
Yes and no. The increase only applies to um earned income. We will still be processing. Changes in unearned income of two hundred dollars or more per month.
Okay, I see.
And, and again, that's per HUD. And I thought I saw Sharice's hand.
Kurt, I cannot hear you at all.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard Sharice, saw Sharice's hand.
Sharice does have her hand up, but I thought you were still speaking.
Oh, sorry.
Sharice, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I just wanted to point out that at the beginning of this conversation with the changes. It said that um all changes still have to be reported within ten days. So no matter what, whether it's an increase or decrease, these changes still have to be reported. And then it's up to the housing, you know, to the service specialist to go, okay, well, we're not gonna do this until the next recertification. Or this is ten percent more than your um income now, or oh, this is a decrease, so we're gonna go ahead and adjust for that decrease. So either way, it is still the responsibility of the participant to report those changes.
I see. Okay, thank you for that clarification, Sharice.
Thank you, Sharice.
Alright, anything else on that? Again, I think this is really an opportunity to stabilize things, make our program more understandable to our residents. And we, we may need to have resident meetings to make sure everyone is aware of. These changes and how they affect them and, and the positivity in it. Cause it's, it's so nice to be able to present a positive change to the program. Um, changes to occupancy standards. I have been uncomfortable with our occupancy standards for quite some time. Um. The Keating memorandum, which came out in the eighties, said it is reasonable to assume an occupancy standard. Of two people per bedroom.
I, I just wanted, I wanted clarification that I'm understanding this correctly, so. Uh, no base, no more vague statements for um. People using this program, right? Uh, you guys have access to DES. But not complete access to see if there's a fluctuation between uh, like our income. Anything with unearned income of over two hundred dollars, we report. But it sounded like we still report any fluctuations in our earned income as well. So even though it sounds like you're trying, it's, it's being streamlined, we would still need to do. Like paycheck stubs, right? And fill out that online form that is provided on the website. Correct? So it's streamlined, but it sounds like it's not. Cause if, if we don't report it within ten days and there's a, a fluctuation of two hundred dollars. We could end up being terminated from the program. So, so what, how is it streamlined if we're still doing that? I'm just can, I just want to clarify.
Okay, again, if it's earned income fluctuations. The increase will not make a difference. If, if there's unearned income and it goes up by two hundred dollars or more per month, yes, the old procedures would apply. This is the options HUD has given us.
What counts as unearned income then?
Anything that's not work, child support, self-security, unemployment, SSI. Um, so e- employment income, self-employment income, those are earned incomes. We don't do increases based on that. And I will say, it's very unusual for someone to have an increase of over two hundred dollars a month in unearned income. Unless it's a, a totally new source such as someone now is receiving unemployment.
Ashley has a question.
Hi, I just wanted to piggyback off of Nadine's question, because I'm a little bit confused too. It did sound to me like it was being streamlined and then we brought up the process of annual recertification. But then Sharice came back and said it's still um a requirement for the tenant to report changes within ten days. Um, and I'm, I'm just a little bit confused about that. Uh, just because I think she also said it would be up to the specialist. To determine whether or not an increase or decrease would happen. Um, and I'm just wondering if there's a process or if it is truly like a bias with the specialist on whether. Rent would increase or decrease.
Well, the specialist will make that determination based on the ACOG or the admin plan. So if we get a change report that, hey, I got a dollar an hour raise. Specialist would look at that and determine increase to earned income. Thanks for reporting. We'll catch you at recertification. And that's, that's all.
And then if it's over the ten percent, would that just, like if it's over a ten percent increase in income? It would be up to the specialist to say that we're increasing rent now versus that recertification?
Awesome. The specialist will not have that option. The option is solely based on the policy.
Okay, and then the problem, sorry.
Then, I think the question that we're coming to is the use of the word determination. This is. I, we're using this in terms of a calculation, if X then Y. Hey, under our current policies, you've received an income, a, a wage increase of at least two hundred dollars a month. Then we uh will increase your rent responsibility. The new policies that are, the HOMA compliant policies would not allow us to do that. If X to uh increase at the, at work, then Y, we'll catch it at the annual. So that's what that determination means, and I, I can understand the difference. We're following through on the policies with that determination. It is still asked to uh, it is still expected to submit these changes. There can be other changes that can happen, but they're few and far between. Uh, that's why we want that communication to happen. But there are already templates to say, hey, you change, uh, you, thank you for reporting your fifty cent raise. Have a good day.
Okay.
Because that's not substantial enough under our current policies to changes. Under the new policies, we would have, we would almost certainly be saying, like, we, we would be determining that there is no change. But it will catch up the annual.
Okay, that makes sense. So then like at annual, there would be no retroactive as long as the person was reporting the changes within ten days. And if the specialist was like, um. An increase would not occur at this time, it would be at recertification, but there would be nothing retroactive.
And there's always specifics, so uh, talking generally, this is, is hard. That's why, that's why that word determination carries so much weight here.
Gotcha.
But um, the retroactive rents would uh, almost would not quite vanish. But they can be greatly reduced um, uh, with these changes because new income. But new earned income is not something that will be uh important factor until. Kurt, please correct me if I got anything wrong. You know, this stuff's complicated.
No, that's, that's exactly right. If there, this would almost entirely negate retroactive rent.
Okay, thank you so much. That makes a lot of sense to me now.
Moses, you have a question?
Yeah, I think that helped clarify quite a bit, but there's still for me a little bit of a hangup with this. Idea of streamlining, because it sounds like it's not really streamlined necessarily for the residents who still have to report within ten days. Uh, but more streamlined on the FHA side where the decision is pretty clear or easier to do. You know, you don't have to do any kind of major adjustments, but um, I'm still a little bit confused about. I guess HUD requires this ten, within ten day reporting. Is that correct?
No, that's an internal policy, Moses, but where it becomes streamlined is ordinarily. If this increase is reported and it meets certain thresholds. Then the, the participant or the resident has to follow up by. Providing pay stubs, documentation, doing an interim recertification, signing paperwork, so all that will go away.
Okay, so if this, if this ten days is an internal choice, can we make it fifteen days or twenty days or thirty days?
You can, uh, yes, that would not be a violation of federal law. Federal law says within a reasonable timeframe.
Okay.
But I will, I will say. That's in place, but if no significant change occurred, there is really not going to be any negative consequence.
So like a fifty cent raise doesn't, if nobody reports that, they're not gonna be harmed at the end of the year?
Correct. It would, it would only be if they didn't report something that they needed to report. We just wanted to simplify that wording because it becomes very confusing for people, as you can see.
Right, and, and in my mind, the streamlining would be to say, you know, you don't have to report any. Changes or really any um increases in income for thirty days, right? That would be instead of, you know, thirty-six times a year, if you got a raise every ten days, it would be twelve times a year, right? So um, to me, that would be an improvement, but I don't know if that's even real, realistically on the agenda today.
Well, it is because. You're adopting this document and that's why you're being offered options, because as the board. This is your decision. It's only up to us to present you with the information so that you can make an informed decision on that.
Right, so can I ask Caleb and, and you Kurt, how would extending the, the length of time between? Um, changes in, in income, earned income be, or whatever kind of income be? In, how would it impact the rest of your policies and, and procedures if it was, if this was from, changed from ten days to say thirty days?
Um, it really wouldn't. So if, if that's the board's direction that they wish to go, that's. That's, there's nothing to prevent that.
Mrs. Ashley, I like that idea.
Is, I was gonna say, is Nadine here? I'm curious.
Yeah, I, I would like that, and here, here's the problem with this streamline. It's not streamlined. Cause when I had my last position, I believe if it's left to the dis. Discretion, you know, everybody gets busier and stuff to make sure that someone on your caseload is, is, is. Had a job where it was very specific for the city. I could not teach more than XYZ hours. And then um, so my rent was, I was just going based on my rent month to month because it was fixed. But I, as a voucher holder, did not cap, have calculate. If it's streamlined and I shouldn't have to calculate, um, that there, that some months have more weeks than others, right? So I ended up having to pay the Housing Authority back eight hundred and eighty dollars. On top of moving and finding deposits. I don't know where people come up with this. I don't have a hundred thousand dollars assets. What I'm asking is like, so if somebody makes a mistake, the voucher holder has to pay that back. So how is it streamlined, even if you're making the same amount if the months change? And I do think that having more than ten days, cause I've been there where it's like, oh, well, you could have gotten kicked out of the program. Um, if that's your discretion, I don't see how that hurts. But it does hurt when a calculation is done wrong and then the tenant has to pay back a miscalculation.
Um, the tenant doesn't have to pay back when we make a miscalculation.
I did. Eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, that wasn't our error. When we make an error, we eat it.
I, can I, I think that the, the comment though is that, you know, when, when you're busy and you're moving and you're dealing with lots of different kinds of. Income changes, because you're working different hours every week and et cetera, et cetera. Then a, a method for forgiving. forgiving some of the mistakes in reporting changes to income within a short period of time would be helpful to the residents, or at least that's what I'm hearing Nadine say. Maybe I'm misinterpreting.
Oh, you are, you are. I agree.
Well, and that's, again, that's your discretion. If you want to just, when you're moving to approve this, you can put in that proviso and that's fine. And again, with the, with the lower threshold for income increases, meaning we're not capturing increases in earned income, a lot of that again will go away, the, the retroactive determinations.
Okay. Is, is retroactive a HUD thing or is that an internal decision?
That's a HUD thing.
Okay, so HUD requires some kind of retroactive recapture?
Yes.
Okay. But is there flex, is there flexibility to what, how you determine that and how much it is and that sort of thing?
No.
Is there flexibility in how it's paid back? Does it have to be a lump sum or can be, can it be added to the next year's rent?
There, there is flexibility on, on repayment. We do repayment agreements.
Okay, okay. So I would like to see as flexible of a repayment agreement as possible if, if it's a requirement by HUD. So, you know, whatever that means, I don't really know, but I, I would hate to see an $880 bill, surprise bill come up at the end of the year for somebody simply through some mistakes in calculation or missed income or something like that when they're trying to just survive, so.
Thank you, Moses. That, that, I did have to come up with a huge chunk of money. And then my repayment, that it was, it did hurt me financially and the housing authority only gave me so many months to do that. Even though I had followed my guidelines, done all this, it was, and, and I hate to see this happen to somebody because that's a lot of money when you have certain parameters financially to legal, so thank you, Moses.
Right. And I mean, you know, I think that you could see if somebody was trying to hide their income versus making mathematical mistakes.
Exactly.
Or being super busy or something like that. But that would also make things difficult for you to decide, Kurt, and, and I don't know if I would want to lay all of that burden on you. I would just like to see a more flexible repayment plan.
That, that would have to be, that would have to be addressed at a later meeting because that was not part of the public announcement for this.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to go off topic.
Later agenda, please. So if we could move forward, but let's be sure and add that to an agenda in the future.
No, no, thank you.
And I, I'm sorry, but I have only got 15 minutes left, so I have a very important doctor's appointment at 10:45, so.
Kurt, why don't you go ahead and get us through this portion and.
Okay, changes to occupancy standards. This is public housing only. We're proposing to increase the five-bedroom occupancy standard from 10 to 12. Doesn't happen often, but we do get families of 11 and 12 that apply at times. We don't really want to. We feel that the size of a five-bedroom, it has two bathrooms, will allow it to house a family of 12 so that we're not turning people down for occupancy standards, leaving them with only the option of Section 8, where what, Section 8 is a good program, but finding housing for a family that size on the private market and Flagstaff is really difficult.
We lost the last five seconds there.
Sorry about that. We, we want to make sure we're offering as many options as we can for these larger families in our developments.
Great idea.
And then the last thing is the earned income disregard is gone. But the earned income disregard was once during their entire life of tenancy, if someone has been unemployed for 12 or more months, we did not count the increase in the earned income for 12 months. HUD is not allowing us to do that anymore, which is why we wish to go with the more flexible option for interim recertification reporting on increases. And I think that's all of it.
Thank you, Kurt. Caleb, so when we, I mean, I, I have a clerical question. When we vote on this, we are voting to approve the proposed process changes. Is that correct?
Yes, Chair, we have, so we have a resolution 2402 that reflects the ACOG, that's the one governing public housing. And then we have 2403, which is for the administrative plan, which covers the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. That's for the changes that we've discussed as proposed. There was mention of the proviso for change reports. It wasn't clear if that was something that you could, that could be captured with this, as Kurt described, or if that would need to be a separate agenda item or not.
I don't know. I would, I would think perhaps we should put on a separate agenda item so we can chat about the length of time a little bit more.
Thank you. I think that would be cleaner as well to satisfy.
Moses, since that was your suggestion, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that. Yes, I'd also like to get some input from residents if possible. I know we have Nadine on the board, but if others had any comments, it would be great to hear from them about that as well.
We'll prepare some material and see what we can do about getting input from resident through clients. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb.
I, I have one more question. Do we need to go over any other additional changes to 2403? Or are all the changes the same in both?
All of the changes are the same in both except for the occupancy standards, which is public housing only. And, and the new waiting list preference, which is public housing only.
Okay. So are we, are we ready to take a vote?
There's a comment from Aaron in the chat.
Oh, thank you. I missed that. Go ahead, Aaron.
Sorry, guys. I just, you know, I haven't had a lot to say, but maybe it'll shed a little bit of light. From everything that I've just heard Kurt say, given that I am in the world of lending and, you know, our entire duty is to be able to show the ability to repay, capacity to repay, debt-to-income ratios, calculating income, the biggest dirty word right now in lending is variable income. And so it is so much aligns with everything I see. Variable income is such a beast to calculate. And so I completely understand everything that's being said here in terms of, of, you know, from my perspective, that very much sounds streamlined and the documentation nightmare that I have to put people through during that process. And then you imagine the amount of eyes and work and all that that goes into it. I just want to say that this makes total sense to me and, and provide that perspective because just imagine the amount of manpower that goes into all that review and everything that goes with it and how hard it is to be able to show the ability to afford a monthly payment when the income is consistently changing. And from everything I've heard, not only are we constrained by what HUD determines and what their rules are, everybody that, that works at the city wants to help as many people as they can. That's the whole goal here is how do we make it as easy as possible? So I just want to, you know, provide that perspective from my world because they're very, very similar and safe harbor practices, all that good stuff. So all I have to say.
That was great. And I would like to add one thing. I think the word streamlined has come into question, but I feel like that the streamlining is on the administrative side, which will make everything that we do more efficient. I know Nadine was questioning whether it was streamlined, but I think that if you look at it in those terms, that it is going to make all the changes and all the, the recertifications and everything we have to do smooth, move along in a smoother fashion. Just throwing that out there.
And I agree with all of that.
Good. Excellent. Caleb, did you have a question or?
No, I just wanted to make sure I know types of, of the essence, so. Thanks, everybody. Your comments and questions as well. But I hand it back to the chair.
Great. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed changes in Resolution 2402.
I motion to approve the changes in 2402. This is Erin.
This is Tatum, my second.
Thank you, Tatum. It has been moved and seconded that we approve, excuse me, approve the proposed changes for Resolution 2402. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. And let's move on to Resolution 24-3. Again, I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed changes as presented.
This is Erin. I motion to approve the changes as presented.
Thank you, Erin.
This is.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley. It has been moved and seconded that we also approve the proposed changes in Resolution 24-03 to the administrative plan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, the same sign. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kurt, for presenting.
Thank you for listening.
Sure. Good luck with your doctor's appointment.
Thank you. I think I still have one more item.
Oh, 24-4, yes.
So to make this quick, we are required under federal law to submit a five-year plan every year that outlines our goals and the directions that we're planning to take over the next five years. That is to be updated annually. This is the final annual update for this particular five-year plan. I highlighted changes in green. Some of the good ones are we have more housing choice vouchers now. We like that. And then here talks about EHB vouchers, which are emergency housing vouchers, which are now phasing out. As long as the people are, as long as the participants are still using them, then they're good, but we may not reissue any more emergency housing vouchers. They've been replaced by stability vouchers, which operate in much the same way. So we did have to add that to the annual plan. And I believe that was the big, the big change there. Next year is where we're going to get really down to the nitty-gritty and have a lot of outreach with our residents and our participants trying to shape the following five years.
Any questions of Kurt? It sounds like we're clear to go ahead and approve the Resolution 24-4, the HUD 50057 Annual Plan.
This is Moses.
Thank you.
This is Moses. I'm, I'm, I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
This is Erin.
Okay, Erin, thank you. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the changes to Resolution 24-4, the annual plan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, we will be sending you a form HUD 50077 something or rather that we have to send to HUD in place of the signed resolution.
Okay, so we don't send the signed resolution, we send that form instead?
Correct.
Okay, I'll sign it. Great.
Okay. Thank you all so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kurt, very much.
Okay. Bye.
We'll move on to informational items. Moses, or do you have anything to report?
I have to apologize. No, I apologize. I missed the last Housing Commission meeting, so I don't have anything to report at this time. I'll be happy to report this to the Housing Commission meeting, though.
Thank you, Moses. Caleb?
Yes, I can present on behalf of Sarah Dar. Just a few items for director's report. First of all, thank you all for the robust discussion and back and forth today. This is really what the board is here for, is to help the public. It's to help understand what these changes are and it's to make sure that what these changes are, when they come into place, are reasonable, appropriate for where we have the flexibility. I also appreciate the discussions with the future agenda items and I've taken note of those. I wanted to mention that we, in the past, before I started, we would share the, our newsletters that we send out to our residents, to our commissioners. We're going to start doing that again. It's entirely optional. It's resident-focused, but we have a monthly public housing newsletter. So we'll be sharing that out monthly. And then once a quarter, we are starting up our, or we're continuing our Housing Choice Voucher newsletter as well. We've fallen off on that one. We have some staff changes, so it just gets set aside. But expect to see those if you have the time. Please do share. If there's other things that come up that you think would be valuable for those, please do share those with us. You can share them directly with me and I will pass them on to our newsletter editor, Breanna Nigosi and Sam, Sam Joe. Expect to see those in the coming months. Thank you. And yeah.
That sounds great.
Sorry, I am a little scattered during the hybrid setup, so I'm, I realize I could probably turn my camera on now. But in addition to that, I wanted to mention, we have been awarded a 2022 High Performing Stat Agency from HUD. This is very exciting. This is a little bit delayed and there's a few reasons for that. We have to applaud. Thank you. We were notified of high performing status back in September, but we were scored a zero on something that we appealed and has been successfully appealed. So we are now happy to share with the board that we have a high performing agency for the year 2022. We're expecting a 2023. I see Tatum also gave us a little emoji applause. Thank you. We're expecting the 2023 review of the same scoring in the not-too-distant future. Given COVID delays on some of this setting, given the inspections delays and things like that, we've, we don't have a clear timeline on that, but we would hope to see it in the next six months.
Excellent.
And that's what I have for us, 10/29. Any questions?
I don't see any questions. Excellent meeting and a thanks to Nadine for giving us a perspective that we maybe wouldn't have had in the past. And no further questions. We will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Everybody.